Musketeen City Council will come to order. We'll begin this evening, as always, with a roll call by Fran Donaldson.
Councilmembers Lorette.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Nat Big.
Present.
Shahadi.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Brett.
Present.
All present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Fran. Folks, would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, there have been some modifications to the agenda for tonight, and the first modification, under Communications, is the swearing-in of two police officers. That will not be done tonight, so we're going to fast-forward to the next item. And I understand there's a presentation on the agenda tonight. Mr. Brady, would you join me at the podium?
I'm Jay Brady. I'm with the I Water and Fish, or Water Environment Association. We changed our name here a couple of years back. I'm the immediate past-president, and I'm here to present a major award to the city of Musketeen. The award is for the 2011 BioSalads Award for Exemplary BioSalads Management for Large Operator Plants. And this award is given to recognize those treatment plants that have made significant strides in the BioSalads program by the development and implementation of cost-effective, environmentally safe, and publicly acceptable BioSalads practices. For those of you that may not be aware, BioSalads are the residual solids from the treatment process that are applied to the land in soil amendment and as a fertilizer. And that's a great job, and that's why we're presenting the award to the city. So I'd like to invite the mayor up to accept the award. Mayor, congratulations.
On behalf of the water treatment plant and the employees of the city of Musketeen and that particular entity, thank you, and they deserve this. This is for them.
Great. What I'd like to do now is I'd like to have Roger Curtin come up. He's the director of the Water Fish and Control Plant, and he'll just make a few remarks. Rachel.
Good evening. I know we have a long agenda, so I'll be very short. The wastewater business, you typically don't get many awards for anything, so we're pretty excited about this. Now, the public perception, wastewater is flush and forget it. Who cares what happens after that? They don't care. Most of the people don't, and they don't have a clue of what we actually do down there. But this award, as I said, we're pretty excited about it, just because we don't normally get very many awards. So it's very meaningful to us, and be picked out of the state as a large operation and be, win this award for this year is quite a feat for us. So I just want to quickly recognize a few people that are involved in this. And first of all, would like Ron Lucina to stand. He's sort of the foreman. He's our BioSalads lead worker. He orchestrates this whole program and what goes on, and guides people and gets them in the right direction. But really, the rest of the staff, either, they're either directly or indirectly involved in our operation. It's quite an operation. We usually do it in the fall of the year. We can do it in the spring, but if we can get it done in the fall, it's got to be orchestrated, and it's got to be done on a timely basis, so our people do a great job of that. So we've got a few of our other people here. I'd like them to stand very quickly. They're part of our staff, the ones that came tonight, and I want to thank them for coming. Thank you very much. And also, we want to recognize a few other people. We've got two, the property owners. We've got two separate properties. There's pipes buried underground on our, we call it an umbilical system, because it's had some hydrants, pipe buried underground, and some hydrants out in the field. Where here, our hose is up to our equipment. We can drive back and forth. And this saves us a tremendous amount of money from loading it on semis. That's what we used to do, loading it on semis and hauling it great distances, using the fuel, and doing all that stuff. So staying over there, just what I call west side town, depending how you look at it, we're able to apply all this with our umbilical system, and I think that's helped us more than anything else to be able to win this award this year, because we were able to cut costs and get the city costs down tremendously. So we have two landowners there. Lutheran Homes owns the ground where our, we've got two lagoons out there. Lutheran Homes owns that, and they own the rest of the ground that we apply BioSalads to. And we have Mr. Dave Armstrong, and also Lori Ann Eyes with Lutheran Homes. I want to recognize them and thank them for their help. And another big piece of this puzzle, going back, for a while, we didn't have our total umbilical system. We only had a part of it. Mr. Jim Hahn, he's with us. Tonight, he had part of that land, and then he didn't want to participate for a while, and we swoozed him into, talked him back into participating with us again, and it's been a tremendous asset to us and to the city, and we really wanted to recognize him and thank him very much for getting back into the program. And I think most of you know him, but we can have him stand up very quick. Thank you. We have two, the farmers that actually farm the ground, they're not here tonight, but some of you know them, and if you ever talk to them, I could, they can even tell you the benefits of what they're getting, our product, of what they're getting. It's not just us getting rid of this stuff. It's an advantage to them, excuse me, and they want this product. We've got a lot of people signed up, would really like to have our BioSalads, but with our umbilical system, we're sticking with what we've got out there. But Bill Unken and Jerry Kim, you know either one of those, two farmers, they're the ones that farm the ground and take care of it. Again, I said I want to make this short, not going to go on any further. Jay's going to come back, and we have one more gentleman I'd like to introduce. So thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Obviously, it's a very cooperative effort here between the city, the landowners, and the producers, and we commend the city and all the supporters of this program. Next, I'd like to bring up Roger Landy, the director of the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, to say a few remarks on behalf of the Iowa Department of Natural Resources.
Roger.
Thank you, Jay. It gives me particular pleasure tonight to be here in what's my hometown for the last 50-some years, that to commend the operations down there. Don Freel, who preceded Roger as a manager down there, his wife Glenda worked 30 years for our law firm, and we followed the development of that thing very closely, and it's always had a good reputation, and I'm delighted to see them have the award. And I want to say, in addition, that having been here through that whole period and seen all the things that have happened in the city, I want to commend not only this city council, but a lot of previous ones for what they've accomplished, because another thing that you're ongoing doing is the separation of the storm and sanitary sewer system. Musketeen is significantly ahead of all the other river cities, and they are finding, I'm sure, that their costs are going to be greatly increased, their problems are increased, and it took courage for previous councils and this one to stay the course, to have fees where they need to be, and to pay for the infrastructure we need, and we, I greatly appreciate it, because I, it makes me proud that my city is a performer and has people in the council who will lead it and make the necessary expenditures. And you only have to go down Hershey and Third Street and some other places to see there's a return for all of this. Those new streets and the better infrastructure improve the neighborhoods, you know, that they, when you get good things around you, they stand up and comb their hair and put on some lipstick in the neighborhood, and it's very, very positive for the city, and I commend you all.
Thank you, and congratulations to the city of Musketeen. I'll turn the meeting back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Thank you, Roger.
Your Honor, could you give us the name of the other gentleman back there in the back row? I didn't catch the names of all those people that were down there.
Well, it's a little bit out of order, but we, gentlemen, Mike, starting with you, stand up and introduce yourself.
Just.
Mike Beckman, my manager, or my manager's supervisor.
Matt Ford, the station mechanic.
Mike Johnson, the station mechanic.
Jim Box, plant mechanic.
James Allen, plant mechanic.
Heart and soul of our city. Okay, at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that has an issue you'd like to discuss with council that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to speak up. Very good, we'll move along. Following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. In which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom, and I need a second.
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Scott? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries seven zero. As I noted earlier, folks, we've made some 23rd-hour modifications to the agenda for this evening, so we're going to go to item number seven, public hearing. This public hearing concerns the Musketeen Municipal Housing Agency's plan. Certain capital modifications and revisions have been proposed to update the MMHA's plan. Section 2702 of the Housing and Economic Recovery Action of 2008 requires that a public hearing be conducted annually to discuss any changes to the goals, objectives, and policies of the agency. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close.
Motion by Osama.
Second.
Second by Phil. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item B. This public hearing concerns the proposed voluntary annexation of municipal airport property. Over the past several years, additional acreage was acquired by the city of Musketeen and added to the airport property as a part of the Federal Aviation Administration's Building Restriction Line Program. Approximately 47 acres of this area is located outside but adjacent to the corporate limit line. Staff has initiated the annexation of this property located in two distinct locations at the airport. This annexation would bring the entire airport within the city's corporate limit line. The Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed the request and is recommending city council take action to approve the voluntary annexation of this property. Prior to any formal action by the city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Bob.
Second.
Second by Jeanette. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item C. This public hearing concerns the proposed voluntary annexation of property relating to the RL Fridley Theaters Development Project. RL Fridley Theaters Incorporated is requesting the voluntary annexation of a 2.8-acre site located at the vicinity of the Mulberry Avenue and US Highway 61 bypass intersection. This acreage is the unincorporated portion of a larger partial, which the applicant has previously requested be rezoned from R1 residential to S3 large-scale mixed use to allow for the construction of the proposed theater complex. The Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed this request and is recommending city council approve this rezoning request. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close.
Mark, and second, Tom. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item D. This public hearing concerns the proposed voluntary annexation of the Parkview Condominiums, Irish Ivy Subdivision, and municipally-owned property. The Parkview Condominium Association and the Irish Ivy Subdivision have signed voluntary annexation agreements with the city of Musketeen. The city has extended sanitary sewer to serve the area, as was required in the voluntary annexation agreements. Additionally, the annexation of the 1.8-acre city-owned partial located directly south, containing a multi-use trail, is also being proposed. The Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed the request and is recommending the city council take action to approve the voluntary annexation of these properties. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close, Your Honor.
Scott? Make the motion, need a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Bob. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries seven zero. We're moving ahead of items eight and nine and fast-forwarding to 10 for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the final plat for the Fridley subdivision. RL Fridley Theaters Incorporated has filed a request to subdivide a 17.839-acre partial of property into six buildable lots and one outlot intended to be developed for stormwater retention. If approved, the owner intends to develop Lot 1 as a multiplex theater complex. The remaining five lots will be marketed for commercial development. The Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed this request and recommends its approval. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Scott?
Second.
Second. Tom, discussion, council. This is a roll-call vote. We'll begin with Scott.
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item 11, from the city administrator. 11A, that is. Presented for city council's consideration is the second reading of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the 2012 addition to the consolidated urban renewal area as it relates to the RL Fridley Theaters Development Project. Certain real property situated in the consolidated Musketeen urban renewal area was designated as a tax increment district. The city is now interested in increasing the size of the tax increment district by adding additional property that is related to the above-mentioned development project. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Bob, need a second?
Second.
Second, Jeanette? Discussion, council. Roll-call vote, starting with Bob.
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Jeanette?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item B. Presented for city council's consideration is the second reading of an ordinance amending Title II Boards and Commissions, Chapter 19, Board of Water, Electric, and Communications Trustees, Section 5 Trustee Requirements. Musketeen Power and Water has requested that city council amend the ordinance to reflect their service areas, which include water and electric, rather than just the city limits when considering members for the Board of Water, Electric, and Communication Trustees. This proposed ordinance reflects this change, along with a requirement that only one resident residing outside the city limits can be appointed to the board. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom, I need a second.
Second.
Second, Osama. Council discussion. No discussion, we'll begin with Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item C. Presented for city council's consideration is the second reading of an ordinance amending Title I Administrative, Chapter 6, Mayor and City Council, Section 7, qualifications of mayor and city council members. The purpose of this proposed ordinance is to clarify the residency requirements of the mayor and council members. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette?
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Phil, council discussion. Also, a roll-call vote, beginning with Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item D. Presented for city council's consideration is the final reading of an ordinance on a proposed rezoning request within the city of Musketeen. A request has been received from RL Fridley Theaters Incorporated to rezone a 15.029-acre area located at the southwest corner of the Mulberry Avenue-US 61 bypass intersection from R1 residential to S3 mixed use. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on the final reading and direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Your Honor.
Scott? Second.
Second.
Second, Osama. Council discussion. And this will be a roll-call vote, Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item E. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the voluntary annexation of municipal airport property?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Second. Osama made the motion, Tom second, discussion, council. Also, a roll-call vote, starting with Osama.
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries. Item F. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the voluntary annexation property relating to the RL Fridley Theaters Development Project?
So moved.
Mark?
Second.
Second, Jeanette? I'll get you next time, Scott, okay? All right. Council discussion. No discussion, this will be a roll-call vote, beginning with Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item G. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the voluntary annexation of the Parkview Condominiums, Irish Ivy Subdivision, and municipally-owned property?
So moved, Your Honor.
Scott?
Second.
Second. Tom, council discussion. Also, a roll-call vote, starting with Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
Item H. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, cost estimate, and setting the date for receipt of bids for the project identified as the rehabilitate airfield pavements at the municipal airport. The project will involve the repair of joint seal damage, corner spalling, joint spalling, holes, linear cracking, durability cracking, scaling, and failed patching. Repair techniques will include joint cleaning and sealing, crack routing and sealing, partial depth PC concrete patching, and full-depth PC patching.
Your Honor, the agenda you have, I don't have it. It doesn't match what I have.
Okay. I sent out an email to let you know that we had made this change. Steve Boca, what is yours show, Steve?
That's what's on the website right now.
Yeah.
It's on the website.
Yeah. It was. We had a contact from the FAA earlier today. They would like to make some modifications to those plans and specifications, and have asked us to withhold moving forward with the public hearing until the next meeting. So we respectfully ask that this be withdrawn from the agenda until the next meeting.
It's on the website, correct? And I sent out an email to let everybody know that the change was made, but apparently not everybody had the opportunity to read their email.
You would like to withdraw this item?
I would like to withdraw item H from consideration tonight, Your Honor. We'll follow up on all of your comments. You haven't had a motion, nobody had a motion on this yet.
Right, and I'm about to do that.
So just withdraw it.
Do we need a motion to withdraw it?
No.
On the agenda? Okay, we'll just scratch it then. At a later date. That was item H.
That was item H.
That we are tabling. Let's go to item I. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the sale of the former National Guard armory property at 1421 Park Avenue. The sale of this property will take place as a closed-bid auction on April 11, 2012. Prior to authorizing the sale of the property, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, April 19, 2012, at 7:00 p.m. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Osama, I need a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Phil? Any discussion, council? Roll-call vote, beginning with Osama.
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. We are also tabling item J, so let's, oops, let's move on to item K, if you will, please. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing to enter into a general obligation refunding loan agreement and borrowing money in a principal amount not to exceed $230,000. City council previously took action to approve the $4.5 million bond issued to be dated June 1, 2012. The city's financial consultant completed an analysis of the city's outstanding bond issues to determine if there would be financial benefits for refunding any of the current debt. Only the 2003 bond issue is currently callable with one payment remaining after the current year's payment. The final payment is due June 1, 2013, with a principal amount of $215,000 and interest during the 2012-2013 fiscal year of $6,450. Staff is proposing city council take action to call the final year of the 2003 issue and incorporate this action into the upcoming bond issue. This action would result in a savings of approximately $4,800 in interest costs to the city. Prior to any formal action by the city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, April 19, 2012, at 7:00 p.m. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second. Phil? That was you, Phil?
Yes.
And Mark with the second. Council discussion. It's a roll-call vote, starting with Osama. It's a roll call vote, starting with Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero.
I'll say aye also.
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott, I missed you. My apologies. Item L. Presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing for the Harrison Street Construction Project. Harrison Street from Park Avenue to Bandang Drive has been identified as a street infrastructure improvement. The proposed roadway would provide a detour during Colorado Street construction scheduled to take place in 2013. The estimated construction costs are approximately $400,000 with additional costs for design, inspection, easement survey, permits, and administration. It is anticipated construction would be completed in 2012. Prior to any formal action by City Council, a public hearing is required. This public hearing will take place on Thursday, April 19, 2012, at 7:00 p.m. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
And that was Phil?
Second.
Second. Tom? Is there any discussion, counsel? A roll call vote, again, beginning with Phil?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item M. Presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing for the Cedar Street Utility Project. This project has been divided into three phases. Phase 1 is nearing completion. Phase 2, which will take place in 2012, will be water, electric, gas, and telephone utility relocations. The final phase, which will be paving reconstruction and grading from Param to Hauser, will take place in 2013. Prior to any formal action by City Council, a public hearing is required. This public hearing will be held on Thursday, April 19, 2012, at 7:00 p.m. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette? And a second?
Second.
Second, Mark? Council discussion. And a vote, beginning with Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item N. Presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution awarding a contract for the City Hall Boiler Project. Three bids were received for this project with a low bid from JL Brady in the amount of $122,279. This project will be funded from prior-year TIF bond proceeds and the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant in the amount of $21,500. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Scott? Second.
Second.
Phil? Council discussion.
Yeah, didn't we have a line item in the budget, a budget session, for this?
This was a prior-year budget item, and we were successful in getting grants for City Hall and for the Art Center. We also received Art Center, a bid for the Art Center, which also came in higher than expected, and we're considering how we can get both projects done right now. Right now, we'd like to move forward with the Art Center, but it was 2010-11, I believe, last year's budget?
Yeah.
But prior year's budget, yes.
Okay. I mean, it just seemed like it was higher than the number we were talking about previously. But if it's being handled by...
It's funded out of TIF plus the grant proceeds, and then we are looking to see how we can fund the Art Center Boiler as well.
Okay.
Any other discussion, counsel? Roll call, beginning with Scott?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item O. Presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Iowa Department of Transportation for the all-town sign replacement program. The federal government is mandating that regulatory and warning, yeah, regulatory and warning signs be converted to the new retro reflectivity requirements by January 2015. The Iowa Department of Transportation's program will provide $5,000 worth of sign and post-material to assist in meeting the federal mandate. The city is responsible for submitting a list of those regulatory and warning signs that do not meet the retro reflectivity requirements. Go ahead, try that, folks. Once the materials have been received, the city has 180 days to install the new signs and 30 days afterwards to report this to the Iowa Department of Transportation. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Osama?
Second.
Second. Tom? Discussion, counsel?
Mayor, I had one question for Randy or someone. Do we have any kind of an estimate on what the total cost will be to the city?
I think the line item budget was 14.5.
Over three, three to five years, I believe?
Yeah, by the time that it's required, which is 2015, it's significant. We know that we have been able to identify and provide the list to DOT up to $5,000 worth of signs right now. So we will submit that to them with the approval of the council so we can get started on this process. The overall cost is going to be significant, councilman and I, but we're going to keep trying to find other ways and to fund it. And in this particular case, DOT has stepped up and made this offer material available to us in the amount of $5,000.
Okay. Anyone else questions of Randy? Thank you, Randy. A roll call vote, folks, starting with Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item P. Presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution releasing a real estate mortgage under the 2006 CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program for 312 Gilbert Street. The property owner received a maximum of $24,999 in funding assistance through a five-year forgivable loan. The project was completed on March 28, 2007, and since that time, 20% of the loan has been forgiven annually, with the final amount forgiven on March 28, 2012. This is the fourth of 12 mortgages that are expected to be released under the 2006 program. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Bob, I need a second.
Second.
Second. Jeanette? Council discussion. Roll call vote, beginning with Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Jeanette?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item Q. Presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution authorizing a mortgage release for 100, the home at 111 Clinton Street. The property owner received the maximum $24,999 in funding assistance through a five-year forgivable loan. The project was completed on April 5, 2007, and since that time, 20% of the loan has been forgiven annually, with the final amount forgiven on April 5, 2012. This is the fifth of 12 mortgages that are expected to be released under the 2006 program. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom?
Second.
Second, Osama. Council discussion. It's a roll call, beginning with Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Item R. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request for authorization to enter into an agreement for design of the Mad Creek Sewer Extension Project. The Clearview Mobile Home Court is under a court order to modify the existing failing lagoon system to meet regulations. The city has proposed extending the Mad Creek Gravity Sewer from Park Avenue West to Clearview. Three bids were received for the design services with a low bid from Shoemaker-Hayland in the amount of $76,300 plus $3,800 reimbursable. These design fees will be paid by internal fund transfers. In addition, negotiations with Clearview have established appropriate and agreeable financial contributions for this project. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
That was Phil?
Yeah.
And a second?
Second.
Scott? Discussion, counsel? This is a voice vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, seven zero. Item S. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request for authorization to enter into an agreement for the geotechnical investigation of the Mad Creek Sewer Extension Project. The proposed gravity sanitary sewer to be constructed along Mad Creek from Park Avenue West to the Clearview Mobile Home Court requires subsurface exploration and a geotechnical support, which are necessary for the engineering and construction. Requests for proposals were solicited, with one proposal being submitted by Team Services in the amount of $8,290. Additional borings, if required, would be at $275 each. It is staff's recommendation the city enter into an agreement with Team Services for the geotechnical investigation of this project. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
That would be Scott, and a second, Jeanette? You okay with that? Okay?
Very good.
Council discussion?
I do have a question. Given the 275 for additional borings, is there envisioned any cap, or is there an upper limit?
There's not a number limit. It'd have to be needed, but as it is, there are 23 borings that we're going to do spaced 500 feet apart. That's part of the proposal. So something odd would have to trigger an additional sewer.
Okay. What, Randy, what would you, maybe you can't tell me, but what is, what would be odd that would warrant?
If they had shale, and they extended that shale, and how that they have to find it, or the, yeah, they extend it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion, counsel? Thank you, Randy. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, seven zero. Item T. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to rename Harbor Drive to O'Brien Parkway. It is out of respect and admiration that outstanding individuals are often recognized for their contributions and efforts in making their community a better place to live. The city's traffic committee has received requests from residents to consider renaming Harbor Drive to O'Brien Parkway. These requests have been reviewed and approved unanimously by the Recreation Advisory Commission and the Traffic Committee. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
That would be Bob?
I'll second that.
And Phil on the second. Discussion, discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, seven zero. Item U. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to enter into a 28E agreement with the state of Iowa relating to enforcement of the health inspection program. As discussed during the 2012-2013 budget sessions, the Community Development Department is being reorganized to shift the health inspection services to an existing employee and to provide support for additional training required by the state to keep the service at a local level. Staff has completed the required training to assure the state that the city has the capacity to enforce the health inspection program. In recognition of that effort, the state is offering a one-year agreement with the city. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Osama?
Second.
Second, Mark? Any discussion, counsel? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, seven zero. Item V. As in Victor, presented for City Council's consideration is a request to authorize the issuance of a purchase order for a new head-to-end network firewall. Five bids were received with a low bid from Insight Public Sector in the amount of $6,964.99. There is $9,200 budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted? Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Scott?
Second.
Second. Tom? Any discussion, counsel?
Mayor, I just kind of want to ask, what's a new head-in network firewall?
Councilmember Bynum, I was actually prepared for that question because I had a feeling somebody might ask that. Basically, what a head-in network firewall is, it's, I would consider it the most important device on our, on our computer network. What it does is it sits at the gateway in between our private network and the public internet. And what its base job is to do is to keep that public side public and keep the private side private.
What's the status of the current system and why, why, why do you need an upgrade?
Okay. The, the existing firewall was placed in, in January 2005, which goes back a little bit. Basically, there's a, there's big changes that have happened in, in this particular type of, of equipment. The existing firewall works on what's called stateful packet inspection, which, or SPI, which is a, a technology that basically looks at where this traffic is coming from, what its destination is, and then what port this, this information is flowing on. And what it does is if it meets certain specifications, a certain set of rules that are programmed into the firewall, it will actually pass that traffic through. There are some inherent limitations in that. It typically works quite well, but there can be some, some holes that can be exploited in that. Or one thing would be, I spoke about source and destination. That source can be spoofed. It can make it look as if it was coming from a different, from a different address than it was actually coming from. Another thing that will allow to do is if, for example, if you look at port 80, and I don't want to get too terribly technical here, but if you look at a, a website address, it almost always starts with HTTP. That is port 80. And typically, on any internet connection, port 80 is going to be open somewhere. And what can happen will be a hacker would make an attempt to, basically, they'd take a whole truckload of data and throw it at port 80 and see what sticks. The newer technology or next-generation firewalls use a different type of technology called a deep packet inspection, or DPI, which goes bit by bit and looks at, and breaks those packets apart, looks at each individual byte of the, of the packet and makes sure that it is trafficked for what is intended for. It goes to, all the way to layer seven of the OSI model, which is, which, there's only seven layers. Anyway, there's a big difference between security, between the, the older generation firewalls and these new ones as well. This device also does intrusion detection, intrusion prevention, or IPSIDS. It's also a gateway, works as gateway antivirus as well. It's a busy device.
You happy with this purchase or do you want something better than what this one's?
Well, we need to protect, we need to protect the data. I believe that what we, what we're looking at here is probably realistic. I mean, honestly, the same company makes different firewalls. They make what they call a super, I'm not making this up, a super massive E10,000 device, which is 200,000 dollars.
Super massive.
So I mean, it's basically one of those things. I think this is realistic for the, our size and, and, and the price range that we probably, I think is realistic that we can stay in.
I want a massive mega one.
Well, I guess that would be out of the council's opinion and you may spend more I can.
Did he answer your question?
Yes, very much. My opinion. Actually, I may have a couple more questions to ask, but I don't want to bore you guys. We'll do it after this.
That'd be good.
Great, thank you.
You have to be careful what you ask an IT person.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're quite welcome. Any additional discussion, counsel, while John is at the podium? Okay, all those in favor of this purchase say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations, John. Item W, presented for city council's consideration as a request approval to enter into a lease agreement for a new city hall copier. Xerox representatives recently approached city staff with an option of converting the existing lease into a new five-year lease for a new machine with the savings and monthly costs. The city is currently paying $857.24 per month. Under the proposed new lease, this will decrease to $748.71 per month for an average monthly savings of $108.53 or $1,302 annually. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette? And a second?
Second.
Second, Mark? Counsel discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item X, presented for city council's consideration as a request from the Fire Department to submit a grant application to the Muscatine Health Support Foundation for equipment to conduct cardiac enzyme testing in the field for improved cardiac patient care. The request will be for $18,949. There is no local match required. The deadline for submitting the application is April 16, 2012. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Scott?
Second.
Second, Osama? Any discussion, counsel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item Y, presented for city council's consideration as a request to approve change order number five for the South End Fire Station. The change order, which totals $4,303, is for miscellaneous items. To date, the remaining 2.5% contingency fee totals $32,480.05. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Scott? Second. Tom?
Mark.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark, or Mark, yeah. Counsel discussion?
I do have a question. I'm not clear on the, the comment that the two and a half percent contingency totals $32,480. Does that mean we've spent a total of $32,480 in change orders? Or is that an attempt to reference the entire contingency that was available in the project?
My understanding, the, the two and a half percent is that contingency could set aside. We have not tapped into that yet.
We had a very small contingency for this project initially.
So that, that is the total and, and this 4,300 comes out of that number along with all the other change orders?
But this is change order number five. Were we paid the first four? Wouldn't that be from that amount?
That's, that's what I'm trying to understand.
No, I'm asking.
We have, we have two sources for the, for the change orders based on the project. We have the contingency and then we were able to get most of the furniture and equipment donated from H&amp;I Corporation. And we had $30,000 budgeted at 35 out of ambulance for that. So anything, the contingency is exceeded, the remainder would come out of that fund. Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item Z, is there a motion to approve the rules of city council as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil? And a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Scott? Discussion?
I just have, have one comment and I assume we need to do that by an amendment on item, it's under cable casting, 12, 12.2. We need to, I think, I think that we need to delete the phrase, says on three or month trial basis. I think we're way beyond the three-month trial basis on the cable casting of the in-depth meeting. The date originally was 1988, 98.
1988.
Okay. There, for a while, there was like six months that we didn't cable cast the, the in-depth meeting as a request from counsel. And then we went back to cable casting all three meetings. So this item needs to be deleted to clean up the language.
Greg? I, I concur with Councilmember Sherrill, sent it out earlier today. So we just simply delete the last six words on the three-month trial basis.
So my question is, because I, after I got the email, I know I already made that change, but I figured you'd probably do something tonight.
Are we going to take out that starting July 1, 1988 because?
We could, but.
Because really I changed it to what it read above. I don't have that in front of me, but I kind of changed the verbiage to read just like it said in the above, for the regular meetings. So you're okay with that?
That's fine with me. If you even wanted to put the in-depth meeting with the regular meetings, that all in-depth and regular meetings would be telecast, that's fine also. Then there'd be a 12-1 and a, or, yeah, 12-1 and a 12-2, because 12-2 would then, would then deal with special meetings if we want to have them televised. So however you want to clean it up, I don't care, but that, I mean, that part needs to go by by you.
Anything else, counsel?
Mayor? I had a question that I sent out earlier, that we've moved a lot of items into the consent agenda. And I'm not sure why we have numbered items scattered throughout the agenda where we really don't handle the business, why they aren't listed as sub-items under the consent agenda.
I'll let Greg respond to that.
We've actually talked a little bit about this this week, trying to figure out exactly how we want to work the consent agenda and, and the remainder of the agenda. The consensus at, at our last discussion was to leave the titles or the subheadings as they are and place the action items up under the consent agenda. But to leave the titles there, should a council member wish to pull an item, then we would take action under that, the appropriate title. But we're looking to, you know, I, one of my comments at, at the, under the comment section was to ask for counsel to take a look at this, see what you think, if there's, you know, we're open to tweaking the agenda and making it work a little bit better.
Well, in, in my experience, the proper procedure would be to have, have those as sub-items underneath the consent agenda, and if one of the council members wants to pull one out, when we make the motion to accept the consent agenda, that individual could make a motion to amend, to vote on that item separately.
Any council member at, for example, if the consent agenda comes up for, when the consent agenda comes up for discussion, at that point in time, any council member can simply pull an item without a motion off of the consent agenda. There's no action required by any other council member in order to do that. So you just simply indicate that you'd like to pull item X off of the consent agenda and that's done. You don't have to have the consensus of your other council members to do that.
And on, on that same vein, in tonight's agenda, six, item six consent agenda, there was a, a bunch of bulleted items from the mayor and so forth.
And I can explain why.
And all I was interested in was if we're going to do this, have it six A, B, C, D, so that we can say, let's, let's pull and, and hold for other considerations, six A, six 10, six whatever.
Well, that was an act of desperation.
I figured that was new.
Because I was trying to get it to line up and it was, and I was under the gun to get it on the agenda, so I resorted to the bullets and yes, there should be.
Okay.
So once I figured out how to get the, the alph, the correct alphabetical letter, because there was no way that you would know, looking at it, where it's supposed to go without flipping through the agenda. But I needed to do that so I could get it on the agenda.
That's the online version you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Right. I'm just wondering if we would have had enough letters this week.
There's, there's, yeah, I was going to say, there's quite a few.
It's a work in process, so we, we're certainly happy to take your comments and, and as we, as we tweak it to here in the next few meetings.
At, at the very least, I would move the minutes for, the approval of the minutes after the consent agenda.
Right.
Since we've moved them into the consent agenda.
Correct. That's, that's good.
And in fact, the language.
I'll show you.
So do we want to hold this?
Okay, this, because that's what I had talked to you about.
Greg, in effect, in effect, the language has always been there to, to pull them.
Mm-hmm.
So nothing's really changed.
That's standard, firm as rules. Yes, absolutely.
And, and what we put in the consent agenda?
Has changed.
Has also changed.
Actually, the consent agenda really was never identified what you can put in. So friends, tweak that in the rules.
Okay.
Any other discussion under city council rules?
My amendment, if you want to treat it as a friendly amendment, then we don't have to vote on it if, I don't know who, who made the motion, who seconded this.
The motion was made, by Phil.
Okay.
And seconded by Scott.
So if we're in consent, we just have a friendly amendment and we don't have to vote on it?
For?
To clean up the language.
For cleanup language on cable casting.
By me.
Okay.
Moving forward, any, any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. We're down to item 14. We're going over 12 and 13. Down to 14, communication, council members, Councilman Lorette.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to wish everyone a Happy Easter and if you're traveling, be careful on the roads this weekend.
Phil?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Scott?
Nothing, thank you.
Tom?
To Mark's remark, Happy Easter to the citizens of Muscatine. Thank you.
Mayor, it's been several months that this, this lighting situation on the bridge has been darkened and now it's, it's, it's working properly, best to my knowledge. I, I'd like to ask the city administrator, from this point on, who does the maintenance of the bridge lights?
MPW is responsible for, for all maintenance on, on the bridge.
Do we have any responsibility with the bridge lighting from this point on?
No, not to my knowledge. I'd have to, I'd have to pull the agreement out, it's been a while, but once, once the project was done, MPW took over responsibility for the maintenance at that point in time. And of course, we had our subsequent issues, which Muscatine-Stanley's worked with city staff, Randy on as well, and recently relit the bridge last week and everything going forward should revert back to the original agreement.
Thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Bob? Jeanette?
Nothing, thank you.
Hey, Tom?
Nothing, thank you.
Brandon?
Yes, I do. I need clarification on item 11H. Are we pulling that completely still or did we table that or what did we do?
We have to withdraw it. I'll put it back to the board immediately.
Did we take action to withdraw or did we just?
They didn't have the motion.
And there was another, and I don't remember which one it was, but the mayor made reference that that one would be, yes, that that one was tabled and, and it wasn't really tabled, it was just withdrew.
We'll bring that back.
Just a clarification on that one.
Anything else, Fran?
That's it.
I have no comments. Greg?
I did have one other comment, and that's, last week, we kicked off our, at the staff level, our discussion of the city code and our review and update of the city code and certainly encourage council members as you come across items or, or have already come across items in the city code, to jot those down, shoot me an email and, and we'll be working on those with the city's attorney. Staff is doing the same thing, reviewing appropriate sections and we'll be working with our city attorney over this next year to, to bring that up to date, so.
So you're looking at the entire code or are you looking at a section of it?
The entire city code.
Depending on which department's.
Except for the zoning ordinance, which we will complete that phase after we do the plan update.
Okay. So the.
If there's items that you've come across.
The police are working on their section in particular, but.
You know, they, they've itemized, they're working on, each department is working on various sections related to their department. We're working with Jennifer Lerner as well, the prosecutor who's identified several areas that she's come across and she's worked with the police department on animal control as well. But if there's items that you've noticed, you know, in, in the past, or you have an issue with, let me know and we'll, we'll incorporate that into our discussions and review.
Any other business, counsel? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.